Good evening. I call the July 2nd, 2025 Apple Valley Planning Commission meeting to order. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff?
No, not tonight.
Thank you. Any changes from the commissioners?
Okay.
Can I have a move for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Move approved. Motion by Commissioner Scanlon, second by Commissioner Schindler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item of business tonight is the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion without discussion unless a commissioner or citizen requests to have any items separately considered. It will then be moved to the regular agenda for consideration. Can I get a motion of approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Sandal and seconded by Commissioner Mahalwad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I'm standing.
Thank you. Motion carries. This brings us to our public hearings, which we have two tonight. Our first public hearing is Snap Fitness, and that will be presented by Sydney. So the first thing I will do is open the public hearing tonight. We will now open public hearing for Agenda Item 4A. The affidavit of publication for the notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the planning department. Everyone wishing to speak tonight at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster, include your name and your address so that accurate records can be maintained. We will begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, city staff will be asked to comment on the proposals, conformance with pertinent regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public. Good evening, Sydney.
Thank you, Chair Kurtz and Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting to you the request for a conditional use permit for extended hours of operation at a Snap Fitness. Specifically, you're asked to consider a CUP to allow 24-hour operation of a Snap Fitness The site is located at 15115 Dove Trail, which is located on the east side of the city on the Rosemount and Apple Valley border, highlighted in red. This facility was previously a CVS pharmacy, which is now closed. The applicant has applied for a building permit for a Snap Fitness, and that building permit has been approved. The property is within PD 625 Zone 4. Within this zone, hours of operations are prohibited from 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., but a conditional use permit can be applied for to extend those hours of operation. There is four properties within the commercial zone, Subzone 4. That includes the previous CVS with the proposed Snap Fitness, a parking lot that directly serves that previous CVS, a bank, and then a QuickTrip gas station. The QuickTrip gas station does have an extended hours of operation CUP with their operations beginning at 5:00 a.m. So like I said, within that PD Subzone, the hours are limited, and then with that, all deliveries and loading shall be done during normal hours of operation. And again, someone, applicant can request a conditional use permit to extend those hours. Additionally, on June 12th, the city council reviewed a request from the applicant to allow the use of a health and fitness facility within this PD Subzone. Previously, a health and fitness facility was not explicitly approved within the PD permitted uses, but the council does have the discretion to study a use and determine if it is similar in intent and intensity as other permitted uses. The council did approve the Snap Fitness Health and Fitness Facility, and the resolution of approval was attached to the staff report for your review. So now, like I said, the applicant has come forward to request the CUP for extended hours of operation. At this time, with the approved building permit, they would only be allowed to operate from 6:00 a.m. to 12:59 a.m. Just for your reference, these are the Snap Fitness building plans. So this is the interior plans, which would include exercise space, bathrooms, locker rooms, sauna, and other facilities that are typically seen at gyms and health and fitness In terms of exterior, there are no plans to change the exterior from what the CVS building previously had, so there will be no exterior modifications to the building elevations, lighting, parking, or landscaping. So the applicant has noted that they plan to use all existing exterior facilities, and with that, the only change would be to signage. This would be the parking lot that previously served CVS and would serve this site as Staff did provide some updated recommended conditions for the conditional use permit to you tonight. Those recommended conditions include the following. Deliveries and loading associated with the operations of the Snap Fitness facility shall be done during normal hours of operation, which is consistent with what the PD requires. All nonessential exterior lighting shall be turned off after normal hours of operation, and any modification to exterior lighting would have to be submitted to be further considered and reviewed by the city. Three, the facility shall utilize 24-hour surveillance and emergency alert systems. And then four, the conditional use permit could be revoked if any of the terms preceding are not adhered to. Just want to note that for the nonessential exterior lighting, that would not include lighting for security purposes within the parking lot and surrounding the building. So if there's lighting that is specifically used to keep patrons safe when they're walking to their car late at night, or any other site security type of lighting, that would And with that, the recommendation for tonight is to open the public hearing, receive comments, and then close the public hearing. It would be the policy of the planning commission to not take action on the item of the night of its public hearing. However, if there are no outstanding public comments or questions, and the planning commission concurs, staff would recommend the following action, which is shown on the slide. And I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sydney. Previous CVS, were they 24 hours?
The previous CVS facility did not have a CUP for 24 hours.
Did they at one point? I mean, I think at one point CVS all had 24 hours, and then I think over COVID, they changed it. Is that?
Chair Kurtz, I did check with recorded documents with the county, and I was not able to find an approved CUP unless for some reason that was removed from the property records. I wasn't able to find one.
Thank you. Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair, Sydney, QuickTrip, they operate from 5:00 a.m. to just before 1:00 a.m.?
Commissioner Scanlon, their CUP allows them to, yeah, open from 5:00 and then operate till 1:00 for the, I believe it's for the store services.
Then with the questions here, so they are granted an extra hour, the open hour early.
Correct.
Has CVS had any comments to this request? Or QuickTrip?
Chair Kurtz, Commissioner Scanlon, we have not received any comments from any neighboring properties or from the commercial properties or from residents.
Okay. And then when you're looking at this property, I'm just looking down the road, it seems like this is, is this designed at some point to have an outlot in it for, based on the size of the?
So this area of the property, I believe they are owned by the same owner, if not by CVS. But originally, when this development came through in the early 2000s, this site to the west was intended to have two strip, multi-tenant strip centers. I'm not sure why those didn't develop, but those were approved at one point. At this point, it's just the parking lot, and I don't have any, I haven't had any correspondence that there will be further development on the lot to the west. So it would just be the parking lot at this time. And the park, the two properties do share a parking agreement so that they can share parking.
Okay. I just want to establish that the way this, just by visual, that it was set up as an outlot, and that's true, that that's something that if somebody chooses at some point, then the owner wants to pursue it, that that is something that would take place?
Correct. It could develop in the future if the owner.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sandal?
Chair Kurtz, Sydney. Sydney, sorry. What is the definition of normal hours of operation?
Commissioner Sandal, we don't necessarily have a definition in our city code, but generally speaking, normal hours of operation happen between about 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay.
Now, the definition, or the hours are limited in the PD from 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., but there is no formal definition of normal hours of operation.
Okay. So their normal hours of operation would then be 24 hours, which means, like, that just doesn't feel like an, you know what I'm saying? Like, it feels like there should be a definition.
So based on the standard business hours, I would say it's 8:00 to 5:00, but if there would want to, if you would want to put a formal hours on the limitation, on the conditions, we could do so. So let me just pull up the conditions.
I mean, maybe that's?
You could add 8:00 to 5:00 or something that you're comfortable with.
I would feel comfortable with 8:00 to 5:00, but I don't know if anybody else cares or if I'm picking at, you know, nitpicking is the word I'm looking for.
Commissioner Halas?
Just for clarification for myself, on the lighting, you mentioned during, exterior lighting would turn off after normal business hours of operation. Does that include the overhead lights in the parking lot? Does it, can you give a definition of what lights are going to be turned off?
Commissioner Halas, so the lights that would be turned off would, I'm not aware if there's any nonessential on there, on the site at the moment or currently. There are existing parking lot lights, and if those are used for security, which they generally are to keep patrons safe as they're walking to their car, those could stay on. All of the exterior parking lot lights that are existing on the site face towards the CVS, so they don't face towards the residential units. And I'm not aware if CVS kept them on 24 hours, but in order to keep patrons safe, the essential lighting would include parking lot lights.
Thank you.
I was going to say, so CVS had to have had lights on previously. The other thing that could be a thought is having like the motion detected lights or something like that. I don't know if that's available for outdoors or whatever. Commissioner Scanlon?
As the city council moved this forward, you know, I agree that there's, with the use of this, converting this over to Fitness Center, I think is a good application. My concern with changing the hours is, is if we open this up, then that opens it up to QuickTrip 2 coming knocking on the door and saying, okay, we want to go 24 hours also. And that's, I find that starts to be problems some then with the residential aspect that these two businesses sit in. But I'm also open to the idea that going with the hours of operation that match up with what CVS, or excuse me, I keep saying CVS, excuse me, QuickTrip has, which I believe is 5:00 a.m. to 12:59, I think would be appropriate so that they both are equal in terms of their hours of operation. My concern is down the road that CVS is going to come back, or QuickTrip is going to come back and want to make a change, and then that's where I'm having concern with the residential component, because then with the traffic coming back and forth, and especially with some of this traffic, the headlights go directly into the residential or the private homes there. So that's where I'm kind of thinking here off of Dove Trail there across the boulevard to the south, so right there. If you're starting to have extra traffic with both businesses, and then of course the light that goes with that for 24 hours. So that's some thoughts I have, so I don't know.
First question, I guess, is QuickTrip, the other QuickTrip in Apple Valley, is that open 24 hours?
Chair Kurtz, the other QuickTrip, I believe it is open at 5:00 a.m. as well.
So that's might just be their company?
Their kind of standard, yep.
Where Snap, I mean, this is their, this is their thing, they're open 24 hours. So I guess my question would be, is if this one doesn't get approved for 24 hours, are they still going to go here, or are they thinking about going somewhere else then?
Chair Kurtz, I would defer to the applicant on that, but I will note that it is their business model to do so, and we do have a couple of other 24-hour fitness facilities in Apple Valley. Not all fitness facilities open at 24 hours, but we have things like Planet Fitness that open, that are open 24 hours a couple days a week, and they are across the street from a townhouse development. It is across Cedar, much heavier traffic corridor. Another facility is Anytime Fitness. That is in more of a commercial area.
Correct. Commissioner Mahalwad?
Chair Kurtz, Sydney, just follow-up question with regard to Commissioner Sandal's inquiry there. I note that the email from the applicant, and this might be something that the applicant can address, item number one on the June 25th email notes that deliveries would be expected during staffed hours. Do you know what the staffed hours are for the Snap Fitness?
Commissioner Mahalwad, I would defer to the applicant on that, but it does note that generally around 10:00 a.m. is when deliveries would come, so.
Sure. Okay. Because I certainly know at home, deliveries come, Amazon and whatever, well beyond 5:00 p.m., you know, usually without any incident. The other, and this again might be another question for the applicant, item number two on the June 25th email notes that there are usually less than 25 people who use the facility between midnight and 5:00 a.m. I'm assuming that's total as opposed to, like, on average, there are 25 people there throughout that time period. But again, if you know the answer to that, otherwise, I'll ask the applicant.
I would say that it's probably total, not at one time, but the applicant could expand further on their operations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Sydney? If not, I will ask the applicant to come up, please. Did you get all those questions?
I did. I'll just let you guys ask in order here, and I'll answer as best as I possibly can.
I'll go back to mine first, where I would just stated if that wasn't approved for 24 hours, and I obviously know that's in your logo and everything, which I totally understand, I would want to be open 24 hours too, is would you look then for another area, or is this your set place?
We are moving our current location from Rosemount over to Apple Valley, so it'd have to be something we would take into consideration about whether or not we still continue to move forward with that.
Still, may I ask you, in Rosemount, were you open 24 hours?
Yes, we are.
And where were you located?
Right at the intersection of 42 and 3, which abuts directly to neighbors to the north of us and immediately to the west of us as well.
Was it close to the Clover?
It's 50 feet from the Clover.
Okay. So I know where the residence is and no complaints or anything like that? How many years were you there?
We've been there 10 years.
10 years, but no complaints? And I'm guessing I belong to Anytime Fitness, and we just have a FOB that we click on, and that's how you're going, so there won't be anybody per se working there 24/7 or whatever, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Did you want to follow up with your questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Mahalwad?
Madam Chair, is Jeff, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the first question was that, you know, what are the staffed hours for the facility? And then the second question is, that 25 people during that midnight to 5:00 a.m., is that in total or on average at any given time?
Right now, we're averaging about 25 people total between that period of time. The lion's share, those being more towards the 4:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m. pre-work crowd, those that start their shifts at 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning. They come before their shift, on their way into work, shower at the facility, and then head directly to work from there. I apologize, what was your first one?
Oh, also, with the addressing or dealing with the issue of deliveries and things like that, you had indicated, you know, most of them would come between 10:00 a.m. and noon, but otherwise during staffed hours. And I was just wondering what the staffed hours are for the?
Staffed hours are going to be 9:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. However, the only deliveries that we receive are every other week, one delivery from Cintas for any of our paper products, those being paper towels or toilet paper. Otherwise, we receive no deliveries, being a Fitness Center.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to follow up with the question I had about the lights. I don't know if that's impossible to do a motion detection, you know, for when someone's walking out and stuff? The lights are there now?
I personally don't know that there is an ability to have motion detector, exterior light poles like that. One thing I would offer, and I had mentioned this to Sydney and her correspondents today, is that while we have been there during our time since we've been approved by the council to operate there, surveying the site, checking on the site, we have noticed several cars there since the building has been vacant and the lights were previously off, loitering and engaging in various activity. Lights, of course, deter that, deter people from hanging out in that area, any criminal activity, things like that. The ability to have lights in the perimeter of the building, whether or not this gets approved or not, aids the police in video surveillance and identifying anything that goes on during those hours of darkness, which we do plan to install exterior security cameras for the security of all of our patrons, staff, and the area as a whole. The assistance of lighting would, of course, aid in the video resolution that should the police require that video for future prosecution.
Makes a lot of sense. Commissioner Sandal? Sandal. Scanlon? Too many S's.
I had mentioned about hours of operation, if they would parallel QuickTrip, 5:00 a.m. to 12:59, that covers, sounds like covers really a large percentage of your clientele for utilizing your facilities.
Most, but not all. It would not be all-inclusive to everybody that we service.
I understand that, that there might be some from those early hours. My concern is there's still an outlot, and with changes possible with QuickTrip, that the whole idea this site, or sites, weren't designed for 24-hour operations. And I think that we're pretty consistent on how we handle that with residential areas in terms of hours of operations, that we don't make a lot of adjustments to those. So those are my thoughts on that, so.
To address the outlot, part of the process to get here was that we engage with the property owner, which is not CVS. We have a lease for the next 18 years on table with them, with an option to purchase at any point in time. We have no aspirations to develop that outlet, outlot. As of right now, there is a privacy fence that goes between the building itself and the adjoining residential neighborhood there. I can only go out on a limb and assume that that was an agreement that was made probably with CVS to put up that privacy barrier specifically for lighting concerns and considerations. And I think somebody had mentioned directly to the south of the property that there is some concern about the increased flow of traffic with headlights coming south out of both those commercial pieces of property there. When I drove past there earlier, there is privacy fencing up there as well to prohibit the light transmission from the streets into the backyards and subsequently the homes. Regarding the potential proposed CUP for QuickTrip, I would offer that that could be handled independent of us based on the volume of traffic. It's my understanding that as of right now, the gas pumps are still available to be used at QuickTrip right now. So the only thing that would be deterred by QuickTrip would be people not going in to grab a bottle of water or soda or anything like that, but anybody certainly needing to fuel their vehicle or anything, or clean their wipers off in the wintertime, could still utilize the service station and fill their cars up with gas.
I'll comment, those are your comments on the whole lot. I've been doing this long enough to know that if there's a piece of land there, that at some point, somebody is going to want to develop it. And indicate that that's not, or off the table, it's, it's open. I see it as an opportunity for somebody, and like I said, I've done it long enough to know that that'll probably happen at some point, even though it's been an extended period of time that it hasn't taken place already, but.
What property are you talking about, this right here?
Yeah.
Well, it hasn't been developed yet. I mean?
No, what I'm saying is that it's open and an opportunity.
I believe that your setbacks in the city prohibit any meaningful development of a commercial property in there. That and the ability for emergency egress out the back there, which would normally be a paved type surface.
That's the whole other discussion down the road, if that would come into play. And so, thank you.
My opinion, if I was the resident over there, and if they were having some kids playing in that parking lot, I would want it lit up, and I would want a business there, personally. That's my opinion, but. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, let's see, please come up to the podium to speak and address all comments and questions to the chair. We will begin the procedure with, I already said that. So anybody interested in coming up that's here for the hearing, come on up, state your name and address, please.
How do you do? I'm Steve Moles.
Hi, Steve.
I live in a residential area right there where we all are. It's called Prairie Crossy Village. I'm the vice president. This is, oh, I thought you were going to come up. She has lots of notes, too.
Can we come up together?
Yes, we can, yes, we can.
So state your name, please.
Sure. My name is Renee Cubes, and I live in Dunwood Trail, and my home faces the CVS pharmacy, so-called, there's new Snap Fitness.
I need the address, though, of your?
Oh, I'm sorry, 15088.
Thank you.
Dunwood Trail.
Thank you.
And we are, I am running up right next to it, too. The gentleman mentioned about the one fence that's there. You can see the grass there, you know, little dark line. That is a privacy fence that did go up so that the car lights didn't hit their buildings. And we mostly hear for light pollution. CVS was never open 24/7. They did close at 10:30 because we had it for light pollution. And the buildings was shut down because they have extended windows up on top that illuminated all my buildings. I have eight units that have their master bedroom that faces a CVS, so then they did shut down at 10:30 courtesy to us. And for the streetlights, they did shut down about 10:30, 11:00 o'clock after everybody vacants the property for light pollution, too. But otherwise, right now, the gentleman did say, there's a lot of vacancy going on now there because it is empty. It would have been nice if we had a little more police vacancies and stuff like that. It was going to be developed, it was supposed to be, you can see the little curvits there with the little road. That was supposed to be a Dunn Brothers', and the rest of it was just going to be office space as in, what do you want to call it, just as a shopping mall. That was all supposed to be office spaces, but that fell through. The property still is up for sale. It's like 1.5 acres. It's going for like dang near $2 million, so it's going to be probably hard to get a developer in there. But otherwise, that's, my concern is, you guys are hoping to extend his time on there, you know, but I'd like it if it wasn't, and for, you know, for lights flashing and all this. And if they're going to be open that late, or 24/7, when are they going to come and plow? You know, if they're going to be there late night plowing, that'd keep all my residents up. And that is one big echo chamber right there, the way them buildings are like that. See how they're like the vias? We could hear everything there, we could hear all the traffic and everything else. And I'd still like to see that fence, there's a lot of missing boards. Sorry to say, but I sit right in my chair to watch TV, and them car lights are hitting. I came about a year ago and dressed it to the I came about a year ago and dressed it to the city here, and she says, "Oh, we'll get on it," but never happened, but that's another story.
Who put up the fence, I'm sorry, who put up the fence, did you say?
I think it was CBS or the developer did, just to block the car lights coming to us for when they're driving around.
I was just wondering who would be.
Because it's like on the top of the, it's on the top of the hill. So, there's a big slope from the fence to down to us.
Just as a comment, I do have a bedroom that faces that way. And I will have to say that that fence, privacy fence, is a wood fence, picket, you know, kinda thing. And you can see the lights go right through. It's not very tall, it's just, it's not very nice. In fact, sometime, one time it did fall over and I called and they had to put it back up, like during the winter storm or high wind. So, it's really not a solid concrete or anything like that. It's wooden fence, picket fence or whatever, I'm not sure.
Old cedar one.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned about lights because right now, the building lights are on, which is fine. But now, the whole building inside and everything's gonna be on 24/7. Parking lot concerns, people, car doors slamming, people chit-chatting out there, meeting people out there. I kinda did a little research, and the ones that are open 24 hours for SNAP Fitness, I found that after staffed hours, then they have their little fob, they can just go in. Well, there's gonna be no supervision there at all. And so, who's to say that teenagers or anybody could just hang around in that parking lot, too? And then with the extra lighting, I'm just concerned that the lights being on 24 is gonna be pretty hard to sleep and just annoys possibly as well. I did go over to QuickTrip, I walked over there, and they are open till midnight, the store. That's what the person said at the thing. They were a while, a long time ago, 24, but they did move it down to midnight. Let's see, what else I can do? And I just did a little research into it, most places are closed by midnight. There are a couple 24 hours. I know SNAP Fitness, I think it was in Lakeville, but I don't know where it's located, if it's in a strip mall. Because if it's in a strip mall, and then the residences are right behind that strip mall, they have a barrier. But we don't really have too much of a barrier. I'm just concerned about lights and noise and parking and car door slamming and people meeting and all that extra activity.
I'm guessing it's the four that is kind of south or north here, not the other four, because you don't really have a lot of parking spaces there, it's more up towards.
Well, I have trees, I have trees, and there's a little slight hill, and then there's a fence. Then that's the wooden fence. So, if like one of my trees blows over, I'm gonna be open wide to.
So, you don't hear any traffic from QuickTrip putting gas?
No, no, we have the building that kinda supplies all the noise there. QuickTrip is so far from us, we really don't catch much.
Well, I hear them, you know, when they put the gas, the big gas truck, you know.
Yeah, we have the big trucks.
At one time, a semi truck parked all night long in the CBS pharmacy parking lot and sat there all night, you know, the air conditioner on or the heater on, and you can hear that. So, that happened once, I believe, or twice.
Okay, thank you for your, anything else?
The main of it is that the front of the building is facing us. That's, so all the, most traffic and everything is gonna be right where I said. It's a big, big echo chamber for us.
And if you put a big SNAP Fitness sign, too, I'm not sure where that's gonna be located, that'd be glowing all night long, too, 24/7. So, that's our main concern.
That's our concern, just.
Appreciate your thoughts.
Great, thank you very much for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in the audience? If not, can I ask the applicant to come back up, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, would you, you know, what are the thoughts of putting up a vinyl fence? Or more of a security fence, more of a private fence without the wooden fence? And I understand if it's a picket fence, that there's lights that go in between it.
So, I'm not the property owner, I don't have.
The property owner would be the one.
I would be more than willing to, the things that are within my control. To address the concern about people hanging out and loitering and the unwanted element, we're deploying an AI system within the facility that lets us, alerts us if somebody comes in that's not one of our members to specifically deter people that aren't our members from coming in, sends us an alert with a video capture. We can address that with the person that we did let them in, so we can curb that right from the get-go. So, that with the cameras, and again, the security lighting is everything that is within our power to curb any sort of unwanted element within that particular piece of property. But we are doing everything in our, in our power to try to deter people from coming into that property. The other thing that I had mentioned to Sydney is there are a couple of lights that are out in the parking lot, and I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with color temperatures for lights, but it's a 5,000 or 6,000 Kelvin, which is the daylight, super white, bright, like the lights here. Those are a little bit obtrusive, and we're trying to be good stewards of the neighborhood. So, since we already have to change out a couple bulbs, I had mentioned to Sydney that we would be willing to do something more like a 4,000 or 3,500 Kelvin, one of the cool yellow type lights, something like the.
Softer lights.
Yeah, softer lights here, something that's a little bit more muted. The light tends to travel less far than the daylight that, again, that 5,000, 6,000 Kelvin light. We're willing to invest into, I guess, downgrading the lumens per bulb there in an effort to be good stewards to the community.
So, that is the front of the building going towards the townhomes there, is there?
Nope, the front of the building faces out to 42.
Oh, I misunderstood what they were saying then. I was gonna say, is there a section where you could just put a sign up saying, you know, between these hours, this is where you park or something like, you know, like that?
For security purposes of our folk, we would prefer them to park on the 42 side, the kind of 42 side there, just because that puts the building between them and passing traffic. So, for the maximum amount of safety, we would certainly be willing to erect a sign to the wall that says, you know, please park, you know, curb side between the building and 42 during the hours of 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. for security and compliance with city direction.
And just experience with the fob, with the 24-hour place I go to. People don't chit chat, you know, you usually go there by yourself and stuff like that. It generally isn't visiting in between those hours. You usually go there all by yourself and such. I had one other question, now I can't remember what it was. I'll come back. Commissioner Mahalad?
Chair Kurtz, Mr. Wyatt. Kind of following up on Chair Kurtz's question with respect to people parking on the north side of the building during these hours. And this might be something for the landlord and not you, but I'm wondering if the parking lot lights could be zoned where there might be lights in that, you know, the area, a smaller parking area that might be used overnight as opposed to the rest of the parking areas to the west of the building, if that, if that were a possibility.
We would internally be able to do that. However, I would offer up that the landlord just had to invest several thousand dollars into cleaning up illegal dumping at the waste receptacle. That is at the southwest corner of the property there. So, it would be an ongoing expense for us to mitigate any illegal dumping, which of course would happen during non-staffed hours, during hours of darkness, which is specifically why we're putting some security cameras up in that area to, again, try to mitigate any of that criminal element that, you know, would be present in that south portion of the property there. But yes, we are willing to zone the lights if that's the direction. There's just a con to the pro.
And that's, I appreciate you pointing that out because it, I'm mindful and respectful of the residential concerns regarding the lighting, but it may be, given the way things are going or have gone with those issues, that the parking lot may be illuminated. I guess, and again, I don't know if this would be a question for you or for Sydney, but is there any prohibition on the parking lot lights staying on overnight? If there are issues regarding loitering, illegal dumping, or other criminal activity? Or do the exterior lights have to be off by 1:00 p.m. or 1:00 a.m.? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Mahalad, in our lighting requirements in city code, we don't have a shut-off requirement for our lighting requirements. It generally focuses on where light is being casted and where, and how high the foot candle readings for lighting can be measured at a property line, specifically when a budding residential. So, that is where our lighting review would come in, but we don't have a limit on when they would need to shut off by.
Thank you.
So, I guess, seems to me, it is possible, given the, whatever issues that the lights might, the landlord could choose to, the owner could choose to keep the lights on overnight anyway to mitigate those issues, regardless of the hours of operation for SNAP Fitness.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, it came back to me. Question was, is there any other SNAP Fitness around this area that is not open 24 hours?
No, there's not.
There's not, even Lakeville?
Nope, I own that one, too.
So, they're all open 24 hours?
Any times and SNAPs are all uniformly open 24 hours a day.
And the next one is plowing?
We are certainly amenable to the noise consideration there. And being as we're contracting our own landscaping and snow removal companies, if there's a certain direction that you'd like us to provide, again, during staffed hours, we can certainly do that. It's just something that we would draft into the contract with the snow plowing company that we use to, you know, come out during business hours or before a certain period of time.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair, this is a question for Sydney, and it might flow back to you. So, two-part question, Sydney. The residents brought up signage. Is the signage in the northeast corner for this property? Or do you have an idea at this point where that's gonna be?
Commissioner Scanlon, there is an existing freestanding sign.
Right there, yeah.
Right here, and that was used by CBS. And then the applicant has a signed permit in, it hasn't been approved yet, but there's proposed signage along this face of the building and along this face of the building. And I may be wrong, but I believe there's some on this east face as well. But in terms of lighting of signage, we could, I believe, count that as non-essential, meaning that the lights wouldn't be allowed to be illuminated during, outside of normal hours of operation.
I just wanted to make a understanding where those points were to answer the questions for the residents, because they had that question on the signage. Okay, my question's coming, at this point, it seems like all our questions, all our discussions are pivoting around lighting. And I think what we need to really make an informed decision on this is a formal lighting plan with illuminations to be able to see where the light's going. And, because there's a lot of parking lot here, and it's kind of my, would be my understanding that you're only gonna maybe use half of it. Correct me if I'm wrong in that statement, but that. Understand what we could do to better control the lighting other than just say that we're gonna change bulbs or whatever, that we put, look at a formal plan, which also includes the signage, whether, when that would be on and off. I don't know. Any comments from the other commissioners here on that? So, but I think that's something that I would like to see done, and then we could come back and visit it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't know that we can make an action on this tonight, our motion. Commissioner Schindler, you've been quiet. I'm gonna put in your opinion on this.
Well, I guess, I think, I kind of agree with Commissioner Scanlon in that I don't know where the light posts are in that parking lot. And it sounds like CBS was, was kind of working to try to do the best for the neighbors. But I, I'm not informed enough. I, I don't have a problem with the 24 hours. But, because from that standpoint of having the business open, I don't think people that are going to the gym are gonna be that loud and unruly.
Yeah, I don't either.
Mad enough that they're up that early.
And have to work out.
And have to work out. But, so I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the 24 hours, but I do have some concern about the lighting and how that is all gonna work out for the neighbors that are right up with all those bedroom windows facing right towards the property.
Thank you. Staff?
Chair, commissioners, I just wanted to add regarding the lighting that typically on a business site, businesses are allowed to have lighting 24 hours a day, mostly for security purposes. So, limiting their lighting could also be an issue for that site. So, I just want you to keep that in mind.
So, these lights are all on already regardless?
Correct.
So, there's not gonna be any additional lights?
Correct.
Commissioner Halas?
I'm gonna jump on what Commissioner Scanlon had mentioned there and say that I think we need a plan on what the lighting is going to be. You mentioned that you'd have a lower lumen, a lower directional light. If you could bring that back to us and say that this is what we could do for a lower lumen light on this, on the west side, which is of the issue, leaving whatever might be on the north side alone for those extra hours. That might be a good plan that we could talk about. Yes, this works, it is more conducive to what the residents are able to see over there. And then on the north side, where people are using it, with direction of using the north side of that building, the lighting that you, that you need. I would think that the cameras and the security that you have there would be of more comfort to the residential people around there if there is people doing such things as dumping and loitering in that parking lot later at night. And it's going, and if you've got cameras that can, that you can look at or somebody is reviewing, and alert the police of what's going on, that would be some help to the local residents also. So, just looking for another plan that you might have and what commitment you would have towards, towards working towards that. I thank you for coming in, though.
I'll do respect Commissioner Halas. What I'm hearing is that the lights aren't gonna probably be what the lights are, whether they can be dimmer or not is probably a code or for, you know, watching for. Am I correct on that, that can they be dimmed or can they not be dimmed? They are what they are?
So, the code has specific requirements as to how much light can be shut at the property line. That's what the code addresses. So, that's how we would monitor it.
That's where an luminary plan's gonna be able to show that, where it's.
Commissioner Sandel?
Chair Kurtz, I respectfully disagree with some of my commissioners here, based on what I'm hearing. I, I don't think, I mean, it sounds like they're willing to work with us and try to get the less lighting where possible, and they don't necessarily have to. So, I, I'm not convinced that we need to wait for a luminary plan or anything like that because they're willing to work with us. And so, maybe for other reasons, we can't make a motion, but to me, it sounds to me like we're getting as good as we can get.
Okay. Commissioner Schindler?
Madam Chair, Sydney. If the, I mean, it sounds like the lights are on 24 hours a day in the parking lot regardless. So, lights aren't even a factor.
Right, the interior lights.
Interior lights would be changing.
Aplicant, could you speak to us about the interior lights, please?
Absolutely. So, one thing about the signs, we're only doing signs northbound out onto 42 and potentially one towards the bank slash QuickTrip area. There are no signage to the west or to the south, again, to be respectful to the community. I did want to, since there's the mention of cameras, I wanted to quell any fears that might exist of invasion of privacy or anything. The angle on the south side of the building would be aimed directly at the dumpster, again, to mitigate illegal dumping and anything like that. It would not intrude into the residential areas at all. More than happy to have an independent verification of that for any purposes that someone needs in the city. The other ones would be directly facing north to cover the parking lot area there, again, just for the security on property there. Regarding the interior lights, there are going to be no windows on the south side of the property. All of the windows on the east side of the property, one of them is being boarded up. All the rest of the remaining windows on the west side of the property are gonna be private offices, which, again, during our normal business hours, staff usually start, like the trainers would start showing up about 6:00 a.m. or so to meet with clients. Trainers are usually gone by 8:00 o'clock, at which point in time, all those lights are on motion detection. So, all those private office lights that face out to the west would all be shut off. So, the only ambient light that would be projected would be, again, to the east towards QuickTrip or north towards 42.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I think we're good. Sure. No, please come up to, please come up to the mic.
Sorry, I like what he said.
Come up to the mic.
That there are all gonna be office rooms, do I have to repeat my name?
No.
Okay. Well, anyways, right up here, is this mouse working?
No.
Yeah, someone is, right there. Anyways, he said the entryway is right there. So, it's kind of a V. So, we do see the entryway. But anyways, on the top side of the building, like he was talking about the office ones, that's nice. But the top of the building is all glass right there and that's what we saw all the time until they shut the building down when their nightlights came on. That's what illuminates towards us, is the upper windows. And when they shut down the building, their nighttime lights go on. So, then we don't see them illuminating windows. And then we saw the entryway where they had their entry lights right there. But otherwise, no, there wasn't much of that. That's all I'd add in. Like we said, daytime light and nighttime light. If it's going to be 24/7, we're going to be seeing the illuminating from the top of the windows. So.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair, Sydney, could you just bring up the interior view to show how the offices are lined on there so that the?
Yes, I can do.
That question could be addressed.
So, this is the entrance. This would be north as on this side and this would be west facing the residential. So, here are the, there's some offices as was noted by the applicant, utility room, sauna, shower, or I believe bathroom. So, that would, this would be the side that would be facing the residents to the west.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sydney. I hate to do this. Applicant, could you come up? I have one question for you and that is the top of that light that they're talking about because I know the building. Is there a way that you can put no glass in there, you know, put up, so there's no glass showing through?
There's no glass that exceeds the height of 12 feet in that building. All the, the windows on the exterior of that building cap at 12 feet because that was where the acoustic tile ran into. I believe what community member was, was referencing was the, the crown lighting that is famous for, for CVS.
Right.
We can control that independent of the parking lot lights and we certainly are willing to do that if, if that's a request. The downside of that is like I had mentioned to you, Sydney, I believe that there was some community prevention through environmental lighting applied when they designed the site in that the exterior parking lot lights are set further away from the building than they otherwise normally would be, accounting for the fact that all of that downlighting around the, the crown of that roof line provides direct downlighting and very little to any light spread from the building there, meaning that some of the security lighting for people entering and exiting the building is provided from that downward crown lighting around the perimeter of the, of the roof there. I believe if they, CVS being they, hadn't planned on having that crown lighting on, they would have placed light poles, maybe more curbside to illuminate the front sidewalk there because if we turn those off by themselves, it does darken that, that sidewalk, both on the north side of the property and the west side of the property where people would walk curbside, walk along the building to get to the main entrance. But we are willing to do that if that's the wish.
You're willing to do that? Because I was going to say it's an issue for the residents. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, let's move forward. Anybody want to discuss or make a motion? Actually, I have to close first. There are no further comments. I will close this public hearing. It is the policy of the Planning Commission not to act on an item on the same night as the public hearing. The Planning Commission will weigh all comments and information received tonight in its deliberations at future meetings. This item will continue to appear on future Planning Commission agendas until a recommendation on the petition can be forwarded to the City Council unless tonight somebody would like to make a motion. Anyone?
I would make a motion to recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow 24-hour operation of a SNAP fitness facility at 15115 Dove Trail, subject to updated conditions 1 through 4.
I would second that.
Second it? Any discussion?
Do we need to talk about changing it from normal business hours?
We're going to add the condition? I would, no, we're 24 hours with the condition of the interior lights is what I'm guessing, correct? That we're discussing?
Right, the four conditions. We're talking about normal business hours and we were looking to change that to 8 to 5.
And we're asking for 24 hours, open 24 hours?
I, I don't, I don't think we need to do that unless you, okay.
For deliveries and for?
Well, for deliveries, yes. Yeah.
So, the question is if you want to clarify what normal hours of operation are?
But for deliveries, not for exterior lighting, right?
Right.
Because that should be later. So, with the, with the change from the first exception for nor, during normal hours of operation for deliveries to be between 8 and 5, 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Does that work?
We have to go 1 through 4, correct, Sharon?
We need to go back and do it.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, you may amend your motion and then specify subject to condition 1 through 4 with the condition 1 reading and then state how you would like it to read.
Okay. Madam Chair, may I?
And you can also modify number 2 if you want to be clear as to what those hours are as well.
Can I ask a question about that one though? Because I, I don't understand why that one is there at all if we, if they already have 24-hour ability to have lights on.
For number 2, non-essential would be things like the signage, if that's illuminated and it would be if, in the future, if they wanted to add any exterior lighting. For instance, some businesses have some, it's not necessarily neon, but they do like a neon strip light around the top of the ground, crown of the building. They aren't proposing that, but if for some reason they were to propose something similar to that, that would not be non-essential, be more decorative. So, we would say that would need to be shut off. Signage needs to be shut off. The security lighting can stay on, is what that condition is saying.
So, but like 5:00 o'clock seems to be too early to shut those types of lights off, right? So, I would say something more like 10:30, like what CVS was. Shall I make the amendment and then we'll see what people think? Okay.
I get what you're saying.
Madam Chair, I would like to amend my motion to recommend the approval with the, what's this called? The updated condition number 1, to read deliveries and loading associated with the operations of SNAP fitness shall be done during, during normal hours of operation between 8 and 5, 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And the second condition, all non-essential exterior lighting shall be turned off after normal hours of operation at 10:30 PM.
And then do we need to add the one about that crown?
Condition about the interior lights, about the?
Crown.
And we would like to add a, as I continue my amendment, we will can, add a condition number 5 about the?
Crown?
Crown, interior lighting. Interior lighting. Being turned off at 10:30 PM? I'm not sure what this one, I thought this one was the exterior one that we didn't need to do a change to.
Correct.
Right, this would be exterior light, right?
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
No, I, I think if you look at the updated resolution 2 sub A says, "Any modifications to exterior lighting fixtures shall be submitted to the city for further consideration and approval."
Because he said that was?
That's where these issues would be addressed, such as the neon B, you know, strip or whatever, you know, I, because it's just, I think, I believe if I'm understanding you, Sydney, that that would all be considered non-essential exterior lighting. And then that's going to be worked out between, you, you know, with any modification to that would require city approval where those considerations would be addressed.
That'd be essential lighting.
If the applicant were to, or the building, probably don't want to add more lighting, it would be considered by the city, it would need to be reviewed by the city. I believe the crown lighting is on the exterior.
Right.
And it's existing.
That was interior.
Okay, so that's, so that I?
So, we didn't need to add a fifth?
I think that modified 2 with sub A addresses all of those concerns, in my opinion.
Got it. Do you want to second?
I would second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay. That brings us to the second public hearing and that is the Village of Founder Circle 3 Edition Pickleball. And that is going to be presented by Terry Dill and I will open the public hearing. We will now open public hearing for agenda item 4B, the affidavit of publication for the notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the planning department. Everyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster, include your name and your address so that the accurate records can be maintained. We will begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, city staff will be asked to comment on their proposal's conformance with pertinent regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public. Terry?
Thank you, Chair, Members of the Commission. Marquee Properties is proposing to construct a 56,500 square foot building that will house an 18-court indoor pickleball facility and that will also have a food and beer hall type Class 1 restaurant. The request tonight to, for the proposal includes three requests, an amendment to plan development number 739. That is to amend the permitted uses within that district to allow an indoor commercial recreational facility as a permitted use and then also for the Village of Founder Circle 3rd Edition Final Platte and then site plan and building permit authorization. The site is located at the northeast corner of 153rd Street and Garrett Avenue. The surrounding land uses include the post office to the west, Apple Ford is located to the north, Riser Apartments are located to the south, Grand State Hotels on the east side, and then there's a public parking lot located in the northeast corner. The site is guided for mixed use, which includes a mix of residential, high, medium and high density, retail and service type uses, public uses, and then also park and recreational uses. The zoning, as I stated, is PD number 739, Zone 4. The uses that are listed now have very extensive list of uses, but the actual indoor commercial recreational facility is something kind of new to the code. The final plat that's up is actually, it's a simple plat. There's two existing platted lots and they are just combining that into one 3.77 acre lot. The site plan for the new structure will face or orient to the north with the main entrance located in the northeast corner. The access to the site will be located on Garrett Avenue and then also on Gallivant Place with the parking lot located on the north side of the building. The outdoor patio areas will be located on the east side of the building and on the south side of the building and those will both be enclosed with a decorative ornamental black fencing. There are sidewalks that will be located going east-west in front of the building and will connect to the existing sidewalks on Garrett and Gallivant. And then there's also three other pedestrian connections to the sidewalk, another one located on the patio on the east and then also from the patio on the south and then in the southwest corner of the building. Here's the grading plan for the site. The proposed remodel pond is located on the north side of the parking lot. And the utility plan, the existing water and sewer are already stubbed into the site and those are of adequate size. The landscaping plan is showing a mix of trees and some foundation shrubs. There's also trees planted in the landscaped islands in the parking lot. Their final landscape plan will need to be submitted. It will have to equal 2.5% of their building construction costs. And then the, these are the architectural renderings. So, the main building material will be a precast panels that have exposed brick finish to them. And then the accent materials will be, there's a wood panel, metal panel, fence or siding type product as you can see on the front. There's a large amount of glass that will be incorporated into the building, especially on the east side and the south. There'll also be over, glass overhead doors that will lead into those patio areas. The building is itself, sorry, I'm trying to see. This is the east elevation showing all the glass. The overall design of it, they're using some colors that are mostly black within some lighter shades of gray, which will provide a temporary look to the site that will be complimentary and fit in well with the central west village design. So, with that, the applicant is here. If you have any questions for them, otherwise I can try and answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Terry. Commissioners, any questions for Terry? Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair, Terry, the current lot or property is being used as a parking lot or portion, portion of it?
This site is actually, is just grass.
Okay, I thought they were, excuse me, I haven't been out there for a while. Well, it still kind of goes back. My question is, is, is this going to affect the parking concerns with the Ford dealership at all? Has there been any discussion with that in association with this? Because that's been an ongoing concern for quite some time.
Yeah, so the two uses actually will be utilizing that parking lot at different times. Their main hours will be 5 to 11 is their peak period for their business use. Their site is going to have 160 parking stalls. And then also on Gallivant, there will be, I believe there's approximately 38 parking stalls that will be able to be utilized as off-site. And then in that public parking lot, there's also another 128 parking stalls.
That public lot is where the Ford dealership employees tend to use versus the on-street or, actually, they're using both. So?
Correct.
So, we'd be covered there not foresee having any parking concerns?
We don't anticipate just because of the difference in time with their business.
Mm-hmm.
They will have pickleball courts available in the morning, but the food hall and that portion of the business would not open until 11.
Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification.
Anyone else with Terry? Guess not. Will have the applicant come up?
Hello, my name is Randy Molchilow and I'm one of the developers of this and then?
I'm Nate Golin, work for 10K Architecture in Hopkins, Minnesota, the architect.
Architect, okay. Is there another building like this anywhere, the pickleball? I mean, is it like a franchise or anything or is it just one stationed and that's going to be in Apple Valley?
This is going to be a standalone in Apple Valley. There are other similar facilities around the Twin Cities, mainly North Side, Maple Grove, Minneapolis and those areas, but there's nothing south side at the moment.
Very excited to see this come into Apple Valley. So, thank you for considering Apple Valley. It's been a long time since that empty lot has been sitting there. So, anybody have any questions? Any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Nope, Commissioner Sand?
Chair Kurtz, I just wanted to say that I think the building looks beautiful. I love that all four sides have all the, I mean, Commissioner Scanlon frequently brings up the, the different sides and making sure they all look really nice. And I really, I appreciate the work that went into making sure that all four sides look really nice. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. A lot of people have been working on it. And yeah, we've, we love the site being kind of in this kind of a developing area and the opportunity to, to kind of enliven, enliven the zone a bit more. And we're particularly excited about the, the corner there right near the, the roundabout and being able to provide some activity on the, on the street and really enliven, enliven that zone.
So, I have a question about noise because pickleball is a big noise factor, right? Especially, obviously, the outdoor ones. Is this very well, you know, built so you don't, no residents are going to complain that they hear anything and stuff like that?
Yeah, so that, that is one of the advantages of the, the precast wall panels that we'll be using around the pickleball courts is that those, those provide quite a bit of density and will be quite sound deadening in their, in their construction. The areas that are glazing, most of that is in the food hall area. So, that's kind of insulated a little bit from the pickleball courts. But yeah, we would anticipate that those precast panels provide a very good sound buffer for the interior of those courts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair, my initial comments will be about design. I will also say the same thing. It's nice to, that you took in account of balanced architecture, design and your use of various? of various materials, class, and especially with tip-up panels and that, that they bring challenges with.
Yes.
And you seem to be able to overcome those challenges, so thank you for your thoughtful design in that respect. To the owner here, can you kind of just talk about the concept a little bit and when you plan on getting things started and before?
Yeah. So the concept of it is putting together two big things that are coming within the Twin Cities right now that the South Metro doesn't have, you know, the indoor pickleball facility. Most of the facilities that are in the Twin Cities are smaller facilities with 12 to 14 courts. By adding 18, this brings in a lot more opportunity for people to play and enjoy the game year round, especially for the residents. And then with the food hall portion, it's just not adding one restaurant concept. We would have four food vendors that, you know, gives them the options to come around, partake in different venues as well, and just enjoy themselves. And then with the beer, beer wall portion as well, you know, it gives them a lot of different opportunities to experience different things there as well. And then the outdoor space, you know, in the spring, summer, fall, you know, we'd like to have different activities out there for the residents, you know, within the area and the community to enjoy and utilize, and just make it what they like.
Okay. Well, thank you. And also thank you for, again, for selecting Apple Valley for this project. And as was mentioned, this piece of property has been vacant for an extended period of time, and it's, I think this is a real good application to bring to that, into that area. So, especially with the apartments and so forth there, that it's kind of a real hub of activity that's going on, and I think it's a really nice fit, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Schindler?
Madam Chair, is there, I can see that there's the 18 courts. Is there anywhere for viewing?
Yes. Yeah, I don't think of the floor plans were presented as part of the, part of the presentation, but yeah, the intention is on the east side where the restaurant and the food hall is, that there's a portion of that, that's a two-story space, and that would be open at the same time that the pickleball courts are. And that's more just about gathering for people that are playing. And on that second portion, there will be an overlook, so people can watch, you know, pickleball at any time from that overlook. We do actually have a little bit of glazing from inside the pickleball, pickle, sorry, the food hall, so that even when people are sitting down, having a beer, having some food, there are some select points where they'll get a great view out into the pickleball courts and see the activity that's going on.
Have you partnered with a sports betting app yet?
Actually, I didn't. Maybe at the end of the presentation, there was some plans, maybe. Yeah, there you go. So, the, if you go to the next sheet, or next page, yeah, so this shows the second floor, so obviously the area on the left is the two-story volume for where the pickleball courts are. That where you've got your cursor is a zone that is a balcony that overlooks the, overlooks the pickleball courts. So there would be a tabletop there with seats, and there's a little game area off to the side there as well. And then the other area that I was mentioning is on the south side of the plan where there's a little dashed X. There's a large window there so folks in the food hall can have a, have a great view out into the, onto the courts.
Awesome. Cool. I think Commissioner Scanlon had asked about a timeframe. Did you?
Oh, timeframe, sorry. We would hopefully like to be operational by December of this year.
Really?
And if, you know, that's, everything goes through correctly, we can break ground as soon as possible. That'd be ideal, and, you know, all the people that are clamoring to play in the winter have somewhere to go.
There you go.
So, they're not out there shoveling outdoor courts just to play outside, so.
Commissioner Scanlon?
The only follow-up I, is maybe for Terry is the need for bike racks and...
It's in here.
It is in...
Talked about bike racks in here.
Excuse me. All right. We're good then.
Did it not, Terry? It did dis, yeah, I got some. Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Any discussion, commissioners? Okay, so then I will ask, please come to the podium to speak and address all comments and questions to the chair. Did you have any questions, ma'am?
I'm just gathering information.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure. If there are no further comments, I will close the public hearing. It is the policy of the Planning Commission not to act on an item on the same night of the public hearing. The Planning Commission will weigh all comments and information received tonight in its deliberations at future meetings. This item will continue to appear on future Planning Commission agendas until a recommendation on the petition can be forwarded to City Council unless we are willing to make a motion tonight. Anyone?
Madam Chair. Excuse, so we need to do this in two parts?
Need to make three motions.
Make three?
There's three action items, Madam Chair.
Okay. Madam Chair, I recommend ordinance amending Article 31, Plan Development, number 739.
I'll second.
That motion was made by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Halas. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I recommend Village of Founders Circle 3rd Edition Final Plaid.
I'll second that also.
Motion made by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Halas. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I recommend site plan review and building permit authorization.
Second that one also.
Motion made, again, by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Halas. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, before there's a vote, the motion does need to reference the conditions. Are they in the report?
Yes, in the resolution.
There are conditions to the site plan, building permit authorization.
Do I see it? Because I don't.
I don't see that.
We just have the three that's on here.
Okay, so that's my air then. I'm, the resolutions should be in your packet, though.
The conditions are on the screen, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you.
19.
1 through 19.
Sorry, I'll get the hang of this.
That's okay.
Madam Chair, amend my number three recommendation to include items 1 through 19 as outlined in staff report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Halas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Okay, this brings us to number five, land use action items. And that is, I believe, Terry also?
Yes, thank you. Staff is just asking for direction from the Planning Commission on conducting public hearings for variances. A variance is like an exception granted by the City Council from the zoning code. And as we go through, you have seen variances, I think, with the applications that have come, if they have another application item with them that you need to act on or make a recommendation on. And state statutes does not require a public hearing, nor does our code accord, our city code actually states that a public hearing may be required. However, it is the practice of most cities that they hold a public hearing just for the benefit of the neighbors so that they can be made aware of requests that's being made. We would process them the same as a conditional use permit, as far as the public hearing notice, it would go in the paper, and then would also be mailed out to everyone within 350 feet. It would be something that we're just asking for direction right now, but in the future we would most likely amend the zoning code to include, to require the public hearing.
Has it been that way in the past at all, or no, did you say?
There's been, I think, I believe you have seen applications where they're asking for another request, then you hear about the variance. But if somebody was just having a straight request for a variance, the hearing has not been held.
My opinion is I'd like to see it included.
Okay.
That's my opinion. If anybody else wants to speak, go ahead.
We just want to make sure that the neighbors are getting notified of it.
Correct. I think that would be the right thing to do.
I agree.
Everybody agree?
Agree.
Okay, that is what we wanted to hear.
That brings us to other business, and Terry, you get to handle that one also.
Yes, so the upcoming meetings, there'll be another Planning Commission meeting on July 16th, and then also on August 6th, and then there's City Council on July 10th and July 24th.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Second?
Motion made to adjourn by Commissioner Schindler, and everybody was excited to say second, so we'll give it to Commissioner Sandow. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting has adjourned.